Welcome to the Stillwater Area School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Marguerite Reinberger, also known as Margot. The 90 Minute Forum is one of a series sponsored by the Stillwater Gazette over the past 25 years. I only recently found out a very interesting fact. The Stillwater Gazette is actually owned by the Adams family. So, of course, I checked, not related to Cousin Ed, but I had to check that. It was so cool when I heard that. Seven candidates have filed for four openings on the school board. In alphabetical order, they are Mark Burns, Matt Cooper, John Fila, appointed incumbent Don Hovland, incumbent Shelley Pearson, Tina Riley, and Liz Weisberg. Thank you all for coming. Instructions on the forum said that they could have a prepared opening one minute and a prepared closing one minute. No notes were allowed except those taken during the actual forum. Cindy Westrop, right here, you guys, so watch it. From Stillwater will be the timekeeper. She has one minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and a stop time card. She will tell you, "Stop," loud, and I will too, to back her up. We'll begin opening statements with Mark Burns.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the Stillwater Gazette for this opportunity to share our message with you, the voters. I'm a resident of West Lakeland Township, have been for 18 years with my wife and my two daughters who attend Stillwater Area Public Schools. I myself am a 1991 graduate of Stillwater High School, back when this was the high school. Following graduation, I went on to get my degree in chemical engineering, I got a law degree, and I'm currently a practicing attorney in intellectual property. The purpose why I'm running is that I want to help define a unifying direction forward that builds upon what works well in this district and what is responsive to the input from all stakeholders, teachers, parents, students, community. We want to get your feedback and define that unifying direction forward based upon that.
Thank you. Matt?
Good evening and thanks for being here. Our children must be protected, nurtured, and prepared to lead. They must learn how to learn, a lifelong pursuit. This is necessary for the 21st century, whether they are heading to college or to the trades. And we need to make sure that every student has equitable access and opportunity to achieve and become all that they can. We cannot achieve this without our talented faculty. There are many terrific things happening in this district every day. We need to build and expand upon them. The challenges before us are real, and they are not simple. As you listen this evening, consider the complimentary talents that are required to listen and clearly communicate with the community, to honestly interpret and explain the data, to access and grow on local and global and tested personal expertise, and the willingness to make decisions that leads us to sustainable progress and growth. Thank you.
Watch it, Matt, you know, she'll be coming in. John?
Hi. I've been an educator for almost 20 years now. I've worked with the most difficult student populations that there are. And what I've learned through working with those populations is that what works for those students generally applies to and works for the larger student population. So I care deeply about what happens to our kids in our community, my own children that will be in the Stillwater District for the next 12 years. Two hours ago, I just landed from an education conference, and I drove straight here so I could make it tonight. And we talked about issues of equity, mastery-based learning, empathy, digital instruction, all those issues that districts around the country are struggling with. And one of the big takeaways was that there are a lot of really good things happening in Minnesota that other people want, and I can help bring those here because I work on those issues every day in my current job.
Thank you. Donald?
Thank you very much for coming. I'm wondering if I had somebody with a student's experience. I spent 27 years as a principal of this school, and I feel that I need to pay back all the things that were done for me. We're facing some very difficult issues at the school board at this time. One, we need to make budget cuts, and in my judgment, we need to protect the students, the class sizes, and the teachers. Those are the important elements in any school. And we need to make sure that our curriculum keeps pace with the needs and the kind of society and world that they're going to be growing up in. I believe that we need to empower parents to give the open to us when we make a mistake. And we feel so very proud of you.
Thank you. Shelley?
Thank you. I would also like to thank the Gazette and all of you who have organized this for us today, and for those who are planning this night and watching. I appreciate that you are engaged and want to make the best decisions possible. My family has lived in Stillwater for 11 years. We have four children attending Stillwater Public Schools that started in kindergarten, and two are now in high school, and two are at middle school. I am on my fourth year on the board, and I have a business background, and also think I have shown that I really want to hear all voices, and to hear from different groups of parents and community members and our staff and our students, who I value deeply all the different voices, and believe that's part of our job, to really decipher what's going on and what different groups want, and to bring about a great product for our district. So I want to keep doing that work and keep serving, and hope that we can move forward together.
Thank you. Tina?
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Tina Riley. Shortly after I graduated high school, I went into business for myself, and since then I've been successfully self-employed and self-taught, self-motivated, and self-driven, which is the direction of education today. My husband and I have lived in the district for over 13 years. We have six beautiful children, two are still in school, some have gone to college and some have gone into trades, which shows there's not one right path, but there is our own path. And we need an educational system to support that. We need to elect board members that represent the community, ones that collaborate but are any kind of thinkers, ones that listen but ask tough questions, and ones that don't want to be followed but follow through. We need to look towards the future, and that is who I am.
Thank you. Liz?
Elizabeth Weisberg. My family has lived in Grant for the last 11 years. I'm currently the director and lead teacher at Redbridge Preschool in Marin. All three of my children attended Stillwater Schools. I've taught in the schools. I've worked in most of the buildings in the district. I've been extremely involved with the school district for the last three years. As I've met people throughout this campaign, I can see their pride and how desperately they want to help our schools succeed. I want to honor that. I want to encourage parents, students, teachers, and board members to have an active role in growing this district. That is my agenda. I don't think anyone runs for public office without having goals they want to accomplish. I feel blessed to live here, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll begin the first question with you, Mark. How specifically do you differ from the other candidates that would make a more effective school board member?
Thank you. So I believe that my background, I have two key, say, ingredients that make me different than my fellow candidates for school board. First is that I am a graduate of this school district. I'm familiar with its traditions. I'm familiar with its unique communities that make up this district and the body that it creates, the melting pot that it creates at the high school, and the fact that we want to have in our elementary schools some independent identity. The second reason why I feel that I am different than the other candidates here is that I have a background in law, that I am a practicing attorney, and what I do every single day is that I mediate problems. It's no secret that there are challenges right now in this district, challenges on the board, and we need to, this district absolutely needs mediating voices, a voice that will listen to the different stakeholders and figure out solutions that work for the community at large. I feel that my practice as an attorney will allow me to listen and to communicate effectively to all those who need to hear it.
Thank you. Matt?
I believe I'm unique among the candidates in that I bring many diverse experiences there. I have a practice of adult pediatric surgery through which I have developed a deep understanding and empathy with the human condition and its diversity. I have an MBA with an emphasis in design and fiction applied to the delivery of processes and services. I've applied those and tested those in healthcare, in aviation, and in my current role in medical healthcare at FreeAid. These have been tested globally, these have been tested globally with great success. I also have both formal training and experience in conflict resolution, something that's probably going to be useful if I'm elected to work.
Thank you. John?
So, in my day job, I do the work of an educator continually. I do it for fun. I do it in addition to my day job. I do it on weekends and during breaks. I take on extra assignments. So I am completely grounded in the work of education. And so I know how board policies and procedures directly impact students in the classroom and the people who teach them, because those play out in my own experience. I'm a member of some statewide collaboratives, so I have connections to some of the best things that are happening right now in terms of curriculum development, professional development. Part of the projects that I've worked on have received awards from national organizations and from the Humphrey Institute. We do a lot of work around innovation. I have experience with restorative practices, which, you know, those are the kinds of skills we expect of our students, and those are the kinds of things that I would expect that as adults, that we practice those same skills and have higher expectations of ourselves than we have on our students. So I do a lot to help students figure out what the barriers are to their learning and then how we overcome those barriers. And dealing with that and issues of accessibility and equity and digital learning, those are all the skills that I can bring as we're updating our policies for the future of our students.
Thank you. Don?
I spent 27 years here as a principal of Stillwater Area Public School. I was the first mentor, the first principal of the year. I spent nine years on the record of National Association of Secondary School Principals, representing North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, and Wyoming, and championed senior schools in all six of those states. This school was the first one that we, that had the integrated teams and homesteads, and that school won two national school championships. Only eleven have ever won that twice, and I didn't do that. The teachers did that, and the students and student leadership that made this school what it is, what it is. I don't think that there's anything that compares with what's happening in this school leadership in terms of interest and in terms of innovation. The teams and integrated team teaching is cutting edge and needs to be perfected. I believe that we can be better, but I think we also need to guard the thing that made us so successful. And I think that this community values education, and they won't accept anything less.
Thank you.
I have spent many hours volunteering in the classroom, mostly in my physical classrooms, which helps me tremendously with the decisions that come before the board, because I have a different understanding, having seen it, having experienced how our decisions might impact the classroom. That is a huge difference in the work that I do. Also, because I am a newcomer, I have almost four years of learning how to do board work and learning the complexity of school district issues, and also learning how to really walk through some challenging times and still desire to do good work and to really learn how to listen to the different groups that are out there sometimes making hard decisions, but learn that the way that we respond to people and the way that we even can move forward after hard decisions is really important, sometimes more important than the decision itself. Finally, I have a degree in business, which helps me understand school district finances and some of the things that, it's all about kids that we have to be able to pay for, so that helps me, as well as my love for the community and all. I love that we are a community that makes a whole school district. I think that is one of our greatest strengths, and I love that we can all come together and become one district of many different diverse ideas.
Thank you. Tina?
Other than my skills in business and marketing, I am a creative protocol and very creative thinker. I am the only community member that has attended all trainings, including the World Youth Work Course, Coursera Graduate, Finance 101. I have gone on the Alexandria Field Trip with the Board and Analyst Study Pathways. I'm informed and I am ready to work.
Thank you. Liz?
I have worked in the district. I'm a parent. My son, my youngest son, all my children went to Stillwater, but my youngest son is still a sophomore at the high school. And I'm a teacher. I teach preschool, so I look at things like a teacher would look at things. I still have relationships with teachers that I worked with in the district, and I would continue to look to those teachers in making decisions going forward. I was a member of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, and so I saw and heard what the intent of the plan was, and I know where we have gone astray from that plan. I was also a member of the Small Schools Committee when I was a parent at Withrow, and we were tasked with finding some, getting rid of some expenses, and we did that. We were a committee of parents, teachers, principals, and we successfully were able to do that. I think that's a good way for us to look at our current budget, to involve teachers, parents, community members, and see what people can live with and what we can live without. I would be honored to be able to start this work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll begin the next question with you, Matt. As you have reached out door-knocking or otherwise to your constituents during the campaign trail, what are the top three issues that they've expressed, and then do you share them?
The top three issues that I hear frequently going door-to-door, or even talking to principals and teachers in the district, are it's enough vitriol, it's enough infighting, we need to get together, we need to reorient to the students and their education, we need to look to the future, we need to deal with the challenges in front of us, and we need to move forward. The second issue is concern about whether we are, as a district, as competitive as we once were. We need to restore ourselves as the benchmark. That means excellence in programs, excellence in programs for all the kids, from the special needs across the spectrum to the academically advanced. It means that through those programs and through that development, we might impact keeping people within our boundaries, within our districts, and potentially even attracting those from other districts to the excellence of our programs. Those are the most common.
Thank you. John?
The initial wave of comments that I received once I announced my candidacy was from parents of special ed students who weren't feeling like they've been served and that their students weren't receiving the appropriate services that they were due. And so I work in an intermediate district, which serves 12-member districts in the west metro area, and what that means is those member districts sends us the student population that they can't serve. And so we have unique programming to suit the needs of those students. So I've been able to help guide them and inform them of what their rights are, maybe who they could reach out to in the district, what other services might be available. So that work with students with disabilities is very important to me. Another one has to do with the expansion of the South, a part of the district, and what we can do with those rising numbers. And my experience with flexible learning spaces and innovative classrooms and practices, I've been able to talk about some of my ideas surrounding how that might be implemented across the district, not just to address some of the concerns people have about growth in the community or class sizes, but it's also just the future of how people are going to be working together. The other thing that's important to me is student experience, and I hope to get back to this in a little bit, but there are students who are really struggling here, issues of identity, issues of race, where their experience isn't what it could be, and...
Thank you. Don?
One of the biggest issues that we're facing is we are in need to make some very serious budget cuts, and we need to protect programs that make it possible for our students to compete in a national and global economy. We need to serve the needs of students with special needs. We also need to protect the learning environment for students who are gifted and are looking for something else in the rest of their lives. It's not an easy decision, because the cut has to be very large, $2.5 million. And you start looking at that, and then to me, what you need to protect above all else is the students and the teachers who work with them. We've got to try to maintain decent class sizes and protect programs that have made us one of the best school districts in the state.
Thank you. Shelley?
Thank you. I think as I have talked to people many times, what comes up, I think we heard it earlier, was how the board has struggled to move forward together, and that is something that I'm passionate about trying to figure out how we can do, how we can work together and work toward consensus more often, and figure out really what the seven board members, the different perspectives they bring, and figure out decisions that really reflect what all seven bring forward. Second, I think I hear a lot about community voice and those who feel like they'd like to have more of a voice, and this is from families and teachers that would like to have more of a voice in what decisions the board is making and what's happening at the administration level, just so that their voices are reflected in what is happening. I think people really want their schools to reflect who the community is and what the community values are, and would just like to make sure that that voice is at the table. Finally, I hear a lot about finances and facilities. It's what we're living and breathing right now as we're looking at budget cuts and as we're trying to decide what are the best options for where to house our students in the best way that they can learn. And so just walking through that, and there's concern about how that's going to look and what we're going to do in that area.
Thank you. Tina?
As we've been out door knocking, I've got a really amazing team of people that have been working with us, and one of the first questions that people say or ask is if we were for the closures, if I was for the closures, and no matter how much the district wants to put that to rest, the community is still really upset. And another item that I've also heard about is the concern about too much technology in the classroom, and they would like their kids not using so much technology but being educated by other means. A recent question I had received was our literacy in science and the fact that we have a declining proficiency levels across the district, and parents are becoming more and more concerned with that.
Thank you. Liz?
I'm going to echo what Tina said too. No matter where we've gone in the district, and we've literally gone all over the district, and I was nervous about it. I'd never door-knocked before. I didn't want people to be mean or anything like that. None of that has happened. What I haven't heard is anything about north versus south. I don't think that that's really how people are feeling. Everybody wants the schools to succeed. But I did hear the question many times, "How did you feel about the school closures?" That is something that people might not want to talk about, but the community is certainly thinking about it, and it's on everyone's mind. I think I've made it very clear that I was completely against it, and for the people that I talked to, that they felt the same way. The other problem that they felt was that the board continues to ignore what the community wants, and so they worry that their tax dollars aren't being spent as they were told they would be spent, and what they want them to be spent on. And that sets us up for future problems. Other thing they mentioned where they would say they would not be in favor of another levy, because they don't trust that we're doing with their taxes what we say we're going to do, and that hurts all of us. And we have got to restore trust if we want to continue to grow the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I think the number one issue that comes up, and some of the other candidates have mentioned, is that there is truly division in the community. And so it's our job as board members to address that. And how do we do that? There are some extremely important decisions that are coming down the road. We have a levy that'll be expiring in just about three years. We need to draw the community together. Where that begins, I'm convinced, is we need to listen. We need to build the trust of the community back by listening to them and acting upon what we hear. It's extremely important. The second concern that I hear is about the budget. Where are our dollars going? How are they being used? I think part of the challenge that the district has had is we need to communicate better what those dollars are being used for and how they're being used very, very effectively. We need to communicate that better to the community. The third issue that I see, that I've heard, is how do we address the growth in certain parts of the district? We know that there is significant growth in the southern part of the district. We need to put together a Long Range Facilities Use Commission that will plan to how do we use our existing facilities and how might we add on or build new facilities. It's extremely important that we address the growth in the southern part of the district.
Thank you. And I'll begin the next question with John. Recent demographic studies show new housing developments and birth rates are on the rise in the South, while birth rates are declining in the North. As a result, the population center of the school district is shifting to the South. What do you feel is the biggest impact of the demographic shift on the school district, and what opportunities and challenges do you believe it will create for the district in the coming years?
So I'll start with the opportunities first. The more diversity and the more perspectives that students are exposed to, the more creative they tend to be, the more innovative they tend to be, and that ends up being good for all students, even the ones that end up living in parts of the district that aren't as diverse. So that exposure to multiple perspectives is good for everybody. It increases everybody's capacity, and those are the areas they're going to be working in in the future. It also means a shift in how we even think about ourselves, right? So we've got this growing population with an expanded need for resources, and we're really just going to have to be honest about this and stop the divisive talk, the secret Facebook groups. This is, this whole "take our district back" has been very distasteful to me. The board is us, right? It's who we vote for, or if you don't vote, then you're also giving them that authority to make those decisions. So we need everybody to come out and vote, because we are the district. The community is the district. There's no "our district" if you live in this area, and "our district" if you live in one other part of the district. So we need to make sure everybody feels represented and heard.
Thank you. Don?
I think that having been in the school district for such a long time, we need to do some healing between the North and the South part of the district. The growth and the diversity in the southern half is great compared to the northern half. There are still a lot of hard feelings because of the closing of the three schools, and that has to be healed. We have to figure out a way to do that so that this kind of thing doesn't create problems that we can't deal with, other issues that we need to deal with. I'm really quite concerned that we not create a situation where a referendum wouldn't pass in either part of the district. So I think we need to answer the issues, deal with them honestly, communicate with our community, and get community input in terms of what the solution should be. I don't see this thing playing out very fast. I see a lot of healing that needs to be done. I see a lot of situations where students are being bussed way beyond what they should be, and we need to figure out a way to deal with all of those issues and at the same time deal with a $2.5 million budget deficit. Those are tough decisions to make, and we have to be able to do it.
Thank you. Shelley?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Recent demographic studies show... Recent demographic studies show new housing developments and birth rates are on the rise in the south, while birth rates are declining in the north. As a result, the population center of the school district is shifting towards the south. What do you feel is the biggest impact of the demographic shift on the school district, and what opportunities and challenges do you believe it will create in the coming years?
Thank you. I actually think it can be really positive, depending on how we move forward with it. We will still be 18 communities. We aren't going to have any ghost towns or any communities where we don't have any kids. So, I think the way we approach the growth and we approach taking care of all of our kids can actually bring our community together, as each area and each community sees that we value every one of them and that we care about every one of our kids and want to make the best decisions for all of them. I think it will, that will start building that cohesion that we've been desiring, but not quite being able to really get down. But as we look at where do we need to address the growth, and how can we address that growth, and what facilities do we have that we can use? And as we look at that together, where we consider the voices of people in different areas, I think that is a really positive thing in a way that our district can be brought together and can heal. And we need to be intentional about not pitting different areas against each other. But I think if we do work hard to make sure that we're bringing together the different communities, different voices, that it can end in a really, a really great district, where everybody feels like they're a part of it.
Thank you. Tina?
Okay. So, if we want to talk a little bit about the southern area, Brookview right now roughly has 90 open seats. It does have a capture rate of approximately 70%. As of the last report that was put out, about 180 students chose not to go to Brookview. There is approximately, according to administration, 40 students that will go to Brookview over the next, each of the next two years, and there is room for those students. What we need to focus on right now is Lake Elmo. There is tremendous growth in Lake Elmo. That school is 100 years old. There are several additions. The students are in portables right now and have been for years. And we can't hope that a future bond will pass. We need to be careful with our planning around Lake Elmo and be thoughtful about the capital funds.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. I agree with Tina that Lake Elmo is, needs to be a priority right now also. I also agree with John that people are very brave on Facebook, and they say a lot of things. But I do know that when I've walked around and talked to people face-to-face, they're not talking about a north versus south thing. That is not really an issue. And what we need to realize is when you drive around Stillwater, there are new developments going up everywhere. If you talk to realtors, they'll tell you how quickly houses are turning over. There is growth. I understand there's more growth in the south, but there is growth in Stillwater. And just even going downtown, we have new hotels, we have new restaurants. It's a very exciting time, and we need to capitalize on that. It's something that we can do. But continuing to talk about this made-up north versus south thing isn't getting anybody If we can bring more families to our district, we will have more revenue and we will have a lot less problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
And I agree with that, the last statement that was just made, that growth is an opportunity for this district. We need to seize upon that opportunity. With more students in our buildings, that brings revenue. And revenue lessens the challenge that the board and the administration have in what do we do with our budget and current budget deficit. So, we want to take advantage of that opportunity. We want to provide spaces for students that are coming into our district. We want to provide the programs that will service those students' diversity. We want to provide services for mental health that will provide and welcome all those families. If we can open our doors in high-density areas, that will enhance neighbors and to say, "We also want to go to that school, because it's right here." We want to make sure that all of our schools in the growing part of our district have space for them, and that's what's very important.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, the implications of the growth in the population in the south are very clear, and that is we need to expand Brookview of itself. That won't solve the problem by itself, however. I was at Lake Elmo yesterday and spent a lot of time with the principal there. I watched the medically challenged kids and how they're dealt with. I watched the kids in the Spanish immersion program. It was pretty terrific to watch, and I advise you to take advantage of that if you can. As Mark mentioned earlier, we do need another long-range planning commission. And that's planning, that is so that we don't have to make rash decisions in a hurry. We do have some time, but Lake Elmo will reach its limits in the not-too-distant future. The shift in population will also impact our middle schools, particularly Oakland. We have to prepare for that as well. John mentioned the diversity, and again, you see a great growth in diversity at Lake Elmo. Diversity is the real world, so it helps to prepare our students for the 21st century. But diversity brings challenges, language, cultural gaps, and performance. So, we have to prepare for that diversity so that we can deliver what we intend to. There are also disenfranchised populations in our district, both geographic and by language. We need to reach out to those as well. We need to be inclusive, to our mutual benefit, to include those populations.
Thank you. And I'll just remind the voters that you can vote for up to four candidates of the seven. I'll begin the next question with Don. For the past several years, the school district has been focused on making schools safe places for students to learn. The district has partnered with local agencies, including the Washington County Department of Public Safety and the Sheriff's Office, as well as mental health providers like Family Means and the Youth Service Bureau. This is all a attempt to make our schools safer so students can focus on three main areas, so they can focus on their learning. Where would you like to see efforts be made, further efforts, and knowing, of course, our budget constraints, keeping them in mind?
The sound is, he's got to read my question here.
The whole issue of school safety is a national problem. I think this district is doing a good job, but it needs to do more. It needs to control access to the buildings, which I've had the opportunity to visit all of our schools, and I've found that you really have to work hard to get in. And so, that part I think they're really working on. There are areas that, such as a high school, that is a real problem to really see what's happening and who's trying to get in. They do a good job. They've got police people in there checking, doing the halls. But I think we need to be aware that with the issues in the nation, looking at what happened just today with the bombs sent to past government officials, that there's no way you can let up on the security that you need to have in schools. I think that there are times when you can, you probably use some students on study halls to patrol halls, to check and see if someone looks like they don't belong.
Thanks, John. Shelley?
Thank you. I think the district has started with some good things by having the Sheriff's Department walk through the schools and identify some areas of concern. I think we can do more. I also don't want our schools to become prisons. I don't want it, I don't want us to keep out the people that we want to be in there. There are some other options out there that would help us. I heard yesterday about an app that teachers could have on their phones that would alert to any issues in the school and could help them address things very quickly. I would be interested in learning more about that. I am an advocate, however, for trying to address issues before they become issues. And that's going to be mostly with our mental health and our chemical health and things like that. We have tremendous partnerships in Family Means and Youth Service Bureau. Youth Service Bureau has been in our high school for over a decade. I think that's a tremendous asset to us. And I think the more we can work with those partnerships, the better we will be, and the more we can help our students before we would get to a crisis situation. Because we know that it costs a lot more to deal with a crisis than it does to help a student at the very beginning of whatever is going on for them, whether it's a mental health need, or whether they have trauma in the home, or whatever they're dealing with. If we can help them at the beginning and help them be able to walk through that, I think it'll help us mitigate a lot of the bigger issues that might come.
Thank you. Tina?
I would like to echo a little bit about what Shelley said. Last board meeting, Dr. Greg Nolan did a presentation on all the wonderful things that the district has done and has brought in Washington County Sheriff's Department. And if you want to see in detail, I would suggest going back and watching that video. Where I would like to see more done is right within the building itself, which would be our climate within the classrooms. I would like to see teachers provided with autonomy and support to create relationships and connectedness with students, that when you have an awesome climate, you have connected and motivated and safe-feeling students and staff, and we could utilize our community volunteers and mentors to achieve that.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. I think that we have done a lot to make schools safer, certainly than when I was in elementary school and junior high and high school. There are many more procedures that we have in place now that are very helpful. I know that students have lockdown drills, which thankfully was never an issue when I went to school, but is a fact of life now. I spoke with a gentleman recently, and it might have been the same app that Shelley was talking about, that referenced a company in Hudson, Wisconsin, has created an app that teachers can have on their phone that has like a stoplight system, a green, yellow, red. And a green would be something like somebody fell at the playground and need that kind of help. But a red would be the worst-case scenario, an active school shooter. This company installs cameras in the school, and if it went to red, it would ask a couple of quick questions, and it immediately goes directly into police cars. The District of Hudson has purchased this, and the District of River Falls has purchased this. This company came to our administration and said they would install it for free, and our administration said no. I'm curious about it, and I would like to investigate it further. Also, recently, I've met a woman who deals with people with addiction issues, and she went to the administration and said, "This is what we should be doing in the elementary school. This is what we should be doing in the middle school." And she, nothing was followed through, and we need to take advantage of our community.
Thank you. Mark?
So, in addition to the good work that the district has been doing over the last few years with Washington County Sheriff's Department, looking for soft spots in the buildings, you know, more of a hard protection of how each building is going to be physically protected from external influences. I think that where we maybe can improve upon, and I believe Shelley touched on this, but is to work with our students where there might be mental health issues. Try to identify where there might be issues very early, and then intervene with trained professionals. We currently have professionals in our buildings, and for them, that's a fantastic benefit that we have here at Stillwater Schools, for them to be able to be, identify and intervene and work with kids who may have a challenge mentally. We want to address that early. One thing that has also been done recently is what's called the Green Room Initiative, and that's a great start, to have a place for our kids who are struggling in the classroom to relax, to figure out a way to recollect themselves so that they can re-engage in their learning. That's one initiative that's been there. We need to continue to work on mental health for our children.
Thank you. Matt?
You've heard from my fellow candidates both about physical and psychological safety. I agree, but I would go a little bit further. In discussion with our local law enforcement, in discussion with members of our constrained district, I believe we haven't gone far enough. There are some events that just cannot be allowed to happen in our district. And the expertise to make our schools physically self, physically safe, does not exist within our local law enforcement. We need to go to true experts, who will come to us with a comprehensive, top-to-bottom plan, not piecemeal, but a comprehensive plan that we then need to look at and try to adopt. Now, you're probably thinking, "That's expensive." Well, part of our relationship is to educate the community, to work with the community, so that they understand that this is a special area of consideration for our students, above and beyond previous considerations because of our modern times. We need to do much more. We need to avail ourselves of the expertise, and our law enforcement would agree to that. That doesn't exist in the district. We need to make these buildings safe. We do need to deal with the psychological aspects of the community, of our students and our faculty and our staff. That can be dealt with in parallel, but we have to do both.
Thank you. John?
I spend a lot of time on these issues. The majority of my career was spent in alternative learning centers. I worked for a drug and alcohol recovery program for a while. I've taken weapons away from students who were threatening each other. The first couple of years of my teaching experience, on the anniversary of Columbine, I've had students taken out of my room by police officers because of threats that had been made. I've been threatened myself as a teacher, so I know what that feels like. And I also, we all watched the news when the shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas in Parkland, Florida happened. It had a particularly profound impact on me, because I actually went to school there. And watching those events unroll throughout the day in the places where I walked the hall are just horrific and still affect me deeply today. What I would like to improve primarily is what do we do before students get to that spot? I know we have students that are afraid to use the bathroom in some of our schools for fear of being bullied or beat up. We need to address those kinds of issues. I'll be meeting on Friday with administration to discuss what we can do surrounding issues of media literacy and issues of violent masculinity, and how we can teach students about that. Building empathy, especially between the ages of seven and 11, have a lot to do with that. So, student culture is what happens, or school culture is what happens when students don't think teachers are watching and listening.
Thank you. I'll begin the next question with Shelley. Is the school board's decision-making process sufficiently transparent to stakeholders?
I believe we can grow in this area. I would like us to, and I've talked about this many times, we have working groups that typically are, I think always are, three board members, a finance working group, community engagement, different groups like that, that we don't have to open, we don't have to have them as open meetings, but I would argue that it would be good if we did, so that community members can hear how we come to decision. We can't make decisions in our working group meetings, but we do work through a process. And I'd like our community to be able to see how we work through those processes. I also think sometimes we don't do as well as we can in communicating. I think that's come up before, that communication is so vitally important, and if we're making a decision that involves different groups of stakeholders, they need to know that we're considering things that affect them, whether it's a school building or whether it's a program, like our gifted and talented we talked about yesterday, and I think is something that hasn't been talked to that group. And so, we need to make sure that we are communicating as much as we can with all of our stakeholders, and that some of that is up to the board and administration to make sure that we are in everything we do, operating in a way that people can understand how we're making decisions, why we're making decisions, they can hear their own thoughts reflected in what we're talking about. And I think that would do a lot for what's happening in the community right now.
Thank you. Tina?
I would say no. I am a pretty engaged stakeholder. I am at almost every single meeting. I walk into some of these meetings, and I'm missing out on pieces of conversation. The meetings that Shelley's talking to, some of the finance meetings or other small working group meetings that go on are not open to the public. When I go to board meetings that week or later that month, there are pieces that I have not heard about or don't understand, or I have to go back and ask for information because I am unaware of those items. I also am aware, because I am so attentive during these meetings, that there is texting that goes on between board members and other members of the public, or not necessarily public, but maybe administration or other board members. And I think phones and computers need to... And I think phones and computers need to be kept in check. I don't think we need phones up at the table at all.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. My answer is no, also, I don't think that they are transparent enough. For example, in September, there was a district email sent out that announced that the district was going to move, the district administration was going to move to Oak Park, and it was said that that was the original plan of the long-range facilities committee, and that was not the intent. The long-range facilities committee wanted district administration to move into blank spaces in schools that had extra space, but it was never planned to close a school and have administration move there. And not only did they not involve anybody in that decision, but I spoke with a city, a city member, a city government member recently, that said that they weren't even contacted about the changing of the zoning. So, not only are they not being transparent to community members, but they're not being transparent to city officials who they had to get approval. I was told that process would take approximately a year to change it from being a school to office space. It's something that we need to work on. It's a pattern that has been established for a long time, and it has to stop. We need to make decisions and involve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I believe in order to improve at least the perception of transparency, but hopefully the transparency as well, is to include as many stakeholders as we can in the decision-making process. And that means by first of all, making sure that we're listening, I go back to that original point that I made, that we as board members need to open our ears and listen. And then, we need to communicate once we have heard the voices of those people, those stakeholders who may be impacted by a decision. We need to communicate with them about what are the options, what are the pros and cons of this decision, and why we are making that decision. I also think that school board meetings should be shorter. I think that there is a bit of a transparency problem when we have board meetings that are four, four and a half hours long. The community doesn't have time to listen to that at all, they don't, they're not, won't pay attention. So, I think we can improve our transparency by having board meetings that are very narrowly focused, that we have agenda items that can be dealt with in a very short period of time. The community will be more engaged and will understand the decisions better that way.
Thank you. This 90-minute forum will be nothing. Matt?
Well, I think transparency and communication from the board to the stakeholders and community is a dynamic process, and frankly, without limits. There are passive listeners, there are passive learners, there are active listeners and active learners. It is the board's responsibility to do everything they can in different types of media, different types of forums and learning sessions, to try to get the message out. I must tell you, though, that whenever I've had questions, particularly during this campaign and prior to the campaign, about educational programs or fine arts programs or athletic programs, I have found individual board members very responsive, I've found the administration responsive. When questions have come up about financial issues, or line item issues, or technological investment issues, I've found to an individual and to a group that they are responsive. Maybe I'm more active in that respect in asking, others may not be, so we have to provide for both. At the end of the day, though, that the board's responsibility is to listen, to educate, and also to lead. It works synergistically with the community, and synergistically with the superintendent and with the administration.
Thank you. John?
You could have the most completely transparent system in the world, but it doesn't mean anything if the people watching it aren't educated themselves on the issues related to that work. So, one of my goals, and what I've started doing now, is helping to educate people about why certain things happen. When people approach me on particular votes that take place that they agree or disagree with, and we have a conversation about why, they may not walk away agreeing with the decision, but at least they have a better understanding of why the board felt that it had to move in that direction. So, I think that's a really big key part of all this, is just helping to talk about this massive system that has all these pressures put on it, from the federal government, from the state government, from the community, and all the increasing demands we have for things like safety and mental health and college and career readiness. You know, there's just more and more being piled on top of schools, so if we can help educate the public about what all of these demands are, why you can only spend certain pockets of money on certain things, you know, that would go a long way to just help solve the issue and be a little more understanding of board issues. I spent the last few days at the conference I mentioned, speaking with Minnesota state legislators and MDE representatives, talking about issues that we were facing, and how we were trying to address those issues, and what kind of supports we need.
Thanks, John. Don?
I think one of the things we need to remember is that our frame of reference is when we went to school. It's different now, and we need to work at communicating that better to our audiences. I believe very strongly that every school should have a parent advisory committee that rotates, that can communicate with the administration, and raise the issues that they hear about or know about. It's all about starting to know what's happening in the building that you're sending your children to. I think that it, we too often judge a school on the basis of when we were there. I know I'm repeating myself on that, but if you take the time to visit the schools in the school district, you'll be amazed at what they're doing compared to what they were doing when we were there. And I think that that needs to be communicated to the public, so that they know. And I think that very often, the divide that sometimes affects a school district, and we're going through some of that right now, it's a lack of communication with the stakeholders. And I think that we need to make sure that we make every effort to keep our ear to the ground and listen.
Thank you very much. I will begin the next question with Tina. Stillwater schools are becoming more diverse in all areas with a higher number of students of color, as well as more English language learners, special education students and children living in poverty. What opportunities and are challenges do you see with these changing demographics, and what would you do as a board member to ensure all of our students have access to equitable learning opportunities?
Well, I would like to vote on policies that ensure that we don't create inequities. I would like to, again, I'm going to go back into my climate and the, within the classroom and having smaller class sizes, and giving teachers support and autonomy, and to meet students' needs to get what they want or what they need. I, myself, am from a racially diverse family, and I, as I grew up, I was able to present some of these amazing cultures to my classmates through history class or social studies class, and it was absolutely amazing, and I was so proud that I was able to do that and enhance their knowledge on the topic. So, I think by bringing that into our classroom and making it a part of our curriculum, that reduces barriers and, you know, helps people get along.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. It's wonderful to have more diverse students. We moved here from the South, which is much more racially diverse than this part of the country. It was kind of a culture shock to get here and to see how non-diverse this area is, so it's a wonderful thing that we are becoming more diverse. Anytime you can have different ideas, bring different ideas to the table, it's going to make it better for everybody. With diversity and with other populations, sometimes there is an achievement gap, and what is a known thing to help with the achievement gap is to have smaller class sizes. That's something that this community has been asking for, for a really long time, and something that has never been a priority. And I think that if we did make it an absolute priority to offer smaller class sizes, to help the students we currently have, to help students that we would hope to attract, that it would help, it would help all of us. I think that the school itself did a study years ago, and one of the proven benefits to smaller class sizes, in addition to improving student-teacher relationship and achievement scores, it also attracted businesses to the community. So, it has many, many benefits, and I think it would be well worth investing in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I believe that the growing diversity in this district is truly an asset to our student body. I was recently at a student organization meeting, BISA, I believe it is pronounced, and I was overwhelmed at the experience that our high school students are getting because of their exposure to diverse issues and diversity in the student body. To see what these students are accomplishing, what they're learning, it is fantastic for all of our students to have that diversity. I also want to answer the question about, how do we ensure that all students have equitable opportunities in the classroom? And this is important to me, about expanding our personalized learning in the classroom. What, how can we improve our resources in the classroom? I, myself, am a youth soccer coach, and one way that we can, that we can, for our players, can have expanded opportunities to learn about what we're going about that evening, is I take some of the students, and a assistant coach takes another section of the students. That way, we can cover twice as much ground by having essentially that asset, that we can have, that resource in the classroom. So, it's very important that we do that, to provide that equitable opportunity for all.
Thank you. Matt?
The diversity about which we're speaking is a richness that adds to all of us. First, we need to reach out to those populations to make sure that we're able to communicate with them, with the students and with their families, through language or other challenges. Second, we need to understand the whole cultural milieu as it might impact how those kids show up at school, that might be different. We need to have resources for acute crises that may occur as a result, as for example, Afton Lakeland is being challenged with. We have to provide for that. In talking with Rob Bach at the high school yesterday, one of the issues for them is to recruit teachers and qualified faculty that represent that same diversity. It's hard to do, they've been trying to do that, but it's important to establish role models for those populations that are more directly identifiable, to further support and to ease the transition and the inclusion of those subpopulations.
Thank you. John?
This district doesn't exist in a vacuum. These are issues that every district around the country is trying to grapple with, and some that have been very successful at that, that we can look to. In my day job, part of my, part of my role is to work on part of our strategic plan that deals specifically with systemic inequities and our role in perpetuating them. So, these kinds of things, people go to weeks and weeks of workshops for, to try to distill down to actionable steps that they can take. And there are things like looking at our special ed population, why are more students of color put into emotional behavioral disorder categories versus their white counterparts who have the same behaviors that end up being labeled as learning disabled, and get extra supports and services because of that diagnosis? And often, students of color are disproportionately, well, it doesn't happen the other way, students of color are identified by race within the first line or two of their IEP. Why is that something that we're identifying students at? I've been proud to receive the endorsement of Out Front Minnesota, which is an LGBTQ advocacy group. I've done English language learning training, I've created modules with the help of subject matter experts for the American Institute for Research. I have a deep experience, interest, and passion for these areas of equity and making sure that multiple perspectives are addressed.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you. I think that one thing we need to recognize, that Oakland Junior High School, Oakland Middle School, right now, is much more diverse than Stillwater Middle School. And there are some ways we can deal with that. We need to teach teachers how to recognize the undercover issues that come up, where students express their prejudices, and recognize it and do something about it. Number two, I think some exchange teaching in certain units between, let's say, Oakland and Stillwater Middle School would be a good idea, because there is a tremendous difference. It needs to be, it needs to be addressed. Stillwater Junior High School, when I was the principal here, had two students of color. One of them became the student body president of the student body, the other one became a music teacher, was a doctorate in Wisconsin. Their achievements clouded any feelings of prejudice that might have occurred at that school. We need to be able to recognize it at a very early stage, and not tolerate it, and deal with it, and educate our teachers to recognize it when it's really not that visible yet.
Thank you. Shelley?
We are growing in our racial diversity, which I think everybody up here has said that's a good thing. It's a strength of our district. As we see more and more growth in that area, I've attended some really great events at Oakland, actually, where students had a cultural fair and were able to share about their cultures. And as I learned about all of these different cultures of our students, it's fascinating to learn of all the different places they've come from, and the different life that they've lived from what I have, and it made me want to know about my heritage. So, I think there's great strength in that. We've always had economic diversity, we've always had diverse learners, we know that our students do not learn the same. I have four kids, they learn in very different ways. So, I think what we need to be sure we're doing is providing our teachers with the space and the time that they need to develop relationships with their students, so they can understand their needs, and they can understand how to bring out their strengths. And to recognize that we're not cookie cutter, we're not going to create cookie cutter kids, right? We, we know that all of our kids have different strengths, and so how to allow our students to really play to their strengths and become the best them that they can be, I think lies a lot with providing resources for our teachers, and giving them the opportunity to really know their students, and be able to allow them to learn in the way that is best for them. And I think that, it seems simplistic, but I think that will go a long way in making sure our students have what they need.
Thank you. Liz, you're up. Funding for public education has historically been an issue for districts across the state. State funding has not kept pace with inflation and unfunded mandates further limit the resources available for our schools. How would you address the district's budget challenges, both short and long term?
Okay. Funding is a huge issue, and one of the things, and I was, attended the budget meeting yesterday, and unfortunately, we had an $11 million surplus, now we have a $2.5 million deficit, and we're having to make hard decisions. One of the things that was written on the board was increasing enrollment, and I think that that is something that we always need to work toward, and we need to have some sort of a marketing plan to make that happen, because if we have more revenue that we control, we can't control what happens in the state. If we try to get more people to come to our district, that is under our control. And we, if we can improve our achievement scores and make our class sizes smaller, I think that will make people want to come to our district. And if we have more revenue, then we have less issues to deal with, like we're having to deal with right now, cutting, cutting things. The budget challenge, and that would help the budget challenge, short-term and long-term. I think that we also need to have a good working relationship with our legislators. We need to encourage them to try to get legislation passed where we will have more funding, where it keeps pace with inflation, which it has not kept pace with inflation. So, it's a combination of having a good working relationship with our legislators, and I think the important thing is bringing people here.
Thank you. Mark?
So, for our short-term budgetary challenges, we know that we have to make some cuts. It's important, in my opinion, to keep those cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. We want to keep our education within the classroom as strong as possible, and so... And so we're going to have to distribute those cuts as necessary for the short term. But how do we address the longer-term issues? We don't want to be in this situation again. It was mentioned to talk about in growing our enrollment. I think that goes back to our opportunity that we have with the growth in the southern part of the district. And one place where we have that right now is in and around the Brookview area. If, if we expand Brookview, that opens the door for people to come in. We're welcoming, welcoming that population, who is a very high-density population in that area, to come in. That grows our enrollment. That helps our budget. Certainly, we can look for longer-range planning for our, our buildings to, to also grow enrollment, and that's, that's also very important. I think that our budget, we need to make sure that it is structurally sound, that we don't run into issues where we, we are running a budget deficit. If we have a strong budget that is structurally sound, that we're not going to deficit spend, and we have growing enrollment, we'll be okay.
Thank you. Matt?
There are many aspects that have already been addressed, but certainly, in, in the short term, we need to look for operational efficiencies that do not impact our programs or create the layoff of staff and faculty. There are aspects of contracts that are able to be reconsidered. There are considerations intermediate term, in terms of non-voter-approved levies for OPEB and Q Comp, to give us some relief in terms of alternative sources for the salaries and benefits of our faculty. There are contributions we could seek from park, park and recreation in both the city and county, in exchange for the district's provision of a beautiful PAC center. Longer term, there are legislative actions. We, we need to get the state to divert some of their subsidies that go to very high-profile for-profit entities. That would be just fine without those state subsidies. They need to be diverted back, back to education. And there's also a reality at the end of the day that we have to think about. It's real. And that is, our district is relatively underfunded compared to many of the others in the state. If you've read the Star Tribune recently, there was an article about eight other cities and entities asking for staged levies to increase their funding. We may have to consider that, even with all the efficiencies that we look at. We have to look at all the opportunities, short and, and long term.
Thank you. John?
I work with a lot of districts across the state, and Stillwater has been doing more with less for quite a long time, but I think there are still efficiencies to be made, and I'm fond of saying that chance favors the connected mind. There are a lot of partnerships and organizations near here that we're not taking full advantage of. We have a membership in District 916, and, and they could help us facilitate discussions with other member districts in that organization to have, help us see what, what they've done on those issues, or we could strategize about those issues. So short term, there are all kinds of free PD opportunities. I know because I work on them and I give them away through our district and through the Minnesota Department of Education. There's memberships in organizations like the Metro Area Curriculum Leaders Group. Long term, I really believe that we need to start looking into open educational resources and start moving away from vendor products, start looking into open-source software platforms instead of paying large subscription fees to vendors who might not have our best interests in mind. And not only that, we can help, we can help customize those resources and those softwares to help our students. So it doesn't just help us save money, it ends up creating better learning opportunities for our own students who can take more control over their learning in their classroom. And there are all kinds of vendor contracts I'd like to just look at and make sure that our, we're really getting what we're paying for or diseliminating them.
Don?
There is no easy answer to this, because the two and a half million dollars, something has to be cut. And we need to, and we're not alone in this. Most of the districts in the state are in financial difficulty and face deficits. The problem here is that we need, if we need a referendum to make up for this, we need to do some healing between the people who are upset about the schools being closed and the money being spent in Southview to increase the enrollment capacity wherever the growth is. We need to do, open the lines of communication and agree on what we absolutely need to protect, to make us a great school district. It's not easy. Not going to be an easy job at all, but it's one we have to do, and it, we need to focus on what, what would happen if we make these cuts to the, to our students, who are passport to the future. I worry about that. We, we, we have to fix it, and I think we will. But it takes all of you to realize that we need to do it for the best of everything for our students. They're the ones that matter. We need to have them be able to compete in a world like we never imagined. And I, I think that we need to look at the real possibility, we're going to need a referendum to correct it without cutting programs that make us some of the best in the state.
Thank you. Shelley?
I think primarily, we need to do the very best we can with what we have. We need to show our community and our legislators that we are making wise financial decisions, and that we are looking at the whole picture, that we aren't, it feels a little bit right now like we're trying to just find little pieces. And that's a short-term fix. But to look at our overall whole picture and decide, who do we want to be as a school district? We can't do everything. So who do we want to be? And I think others have said, we, we know that the biggest difference is made for our students in the classroom with their teachers, and so how do we equip our teachers to do the best they can with our students? But I think as far as long term, I'd like to see a budget committee formed with community experts. I think we have a lot of great community members that have expertise in financial areas, along with our administration, to really take that holistic look at our entire budget and see where, where could we be doing better? What could we be doing better? So that when we go to our community, we can show them with certainty that we are doing the very best with their money, and that they're more willing to support us when we can show them that. In addition, I'd like to see us explore more partnership opportunities. I know we have trade unions and things like that, that are, would be happy to work with our students and come in and help our students find different pathways and do internships and apprenticeships and things like that. We don't need, we don't have that right now, but we don't need an expensive program when we have partners that are willing to come alongside.
Thank you. And Tina?
I believe we need to enhance our school climate to allow for growth, which will increase our revenue, and that is a cycle that can continue on and on and on. I know we have an eight million dollar cross subsidy. We have a legislative working group that is very involved with very lengthy board reports following those legislative working group meetings. And they are trying to engage the community and get them involved in going to advocate as well for the district. What we also need is good working relationships. The board needs to have good working relationships with our legislators to advocate for adequate funding.
Thank you. I'll begin back to you, Mark. Final question, and I have to go to one minute. Mark, is there any topic that we did not cover tonight that you feel you would like the voters to know how you stand?
We've covered a lot of topics tonight, but one, one item that I do want to touch upon, I, I did bring it up in one of my answers, but I do want to expand upon it, was this idea of personalized learning. Back when the community came together to put together the Bridge to Excellence Plan, worked very hard on it, and one of the main tenets of it was, how can we improve our education in this district? And the answer was to, to increase our personalization of our learning, and that means, within each classroom, what can we do to address each student? What, what can we do through curriculum, through resources in the classroom to improve their outcomes? That might be identifying dyslexia at an early age, it, it might be providing resources to them, it may be providing different math opportunities to kids who have challenges.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
We have many people at all levels working very hard. We need to work smarter. We need to innovate. We need to not limit ourselves to ideas that are generated locally. There are lots of great ideas that may be applicable, that we can find nationally, globally. We need to have a broader view. It will include the local community, it will include the local faculty, but it'll be a broader perspective. We need to do that because ultimately, our students, whether they're going to college or, or to non-college pursuits, will be competitive with that real world. We've addressed, in some respects this evening, the diversity, which is a real-world challenge. We need to embrace that, we need to prepare for that, and we need to include that. I have a daughter in this district. It's very personal for me as well. I want it to be right for her as well.
Thank you. John?
As you can imagine, I probably have a lot more to say on all of these issues and, and others, and I, I try to document that as much as I can, but I think one that covers a few different of, of those issues is the, the issue of student anxiety, and how the student anxiety levels are at all-time highs right now. And if people are concerned about things like test scores, or student performance, or student grades and credits, and just safety, overall student experience, that anxiety level needs to be addressed. You are not ready to learn if you are, if you are feeling anxious, if you are feeling scared. Some of what plays into that is, is screen addiction, cellphone addiction. If, if you go twenty minutes without being able to check your cellphone, you start to get anxious, and there, there are plenty of media reports that document that. But it, you know, if we just take kids' phones away, we've got a bunch of addicts looking for their next fix that can't get it, and we're just telling them, just sit here and behave. Just do what, do what we're do-
Thank you.
More later.
Don? You're up.
An issue that is important that you haven't-
Yeah, that we haven't talked about, Don. Any issue you would like to vote?
An issue we haven't talked about that's important to you.
First of all, I totally agree with Lisa.
Shelley, will you pull that back?
I think that, I think it's impossible to be able to communicate with your students if they're being drawn to other issues that, most of them are technology. We're growing an entire student population that is not going to be able to spell or punctuate. You can't go to a dinner with your family and people actually communicate. They, they, they're on their cellphone. We have to figure out a way to reconnect with real people so that they can take the advantage of being concerned about what's happening around them. If, if we don't do that, we're gonna, we're gonna create an entire organ, a life of not caring about the important things. We really need to do that.
Thank you. Shelley?
Thank you. What I really want in my heart of hearts for this district is for us to decide collectively with our community, our parents, our teachers, our students, who we want to be, and then to pursue that as hard as we can. We know that few students fit into this nice little box of education. I really want us to provide opportunities for our students to thrive and to become who they are created to become, to not hold them back, to present opportunities for them to learn in different ways, to be able to pursue different areas of, of interest, to be able to really find joy in learning. That's what I think, I think it's what we all want. I think it's what our whole, the St. Cray Valley wants for our kids, just, we want them to succeed, and to provide them opportunities to become the best that they can without comparing ourselves to other districts. I, I don't think that's what it's about, trying to compare and, and be better than anybody. It's about who can we be and to be the best district that we can be.
Thank you. Tina?
I care about the educational outcomes of every student in the district, which is why I support smaller learning environments. My heart sank when the proficiency scores came out for the district this fall. These kids are our future, and we need to set them up for success.
Thank you. Liz?
Okay, I'm gonna try to go fast, because this is something we did talk about, I just didn't get everything that I wanted to say in, in the ninety seconds, so here I go. Okay. And when I was on the Innovating Small Schools Committee, when we had the, we had the committee that came together to decide on cuts, we all came together, teachers, principals, board members even. When I went to the board meeting yesterday, the thing that was missing, there was a list of cuts that principals had suggested with directors, but was no mention of what teachers would consider cutting. And we need to go to the teachers to decide what they can live with and can live, can live without. We also need to drastically cut our administration. Our district administration expenses have skyrocketed in the last three years. We've added four director positions and eleven other positions, and that is the first place I think we should cut, because we need to keep the cuts far from the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz, I will begin one-minute closings with you.
All right. Let me get back to that one. Okay. Thank you for, everybody for coming tonight. This is our last one. It's very difficult to squeeze everything you want to say into a very short time, so I thank everybody for your patience. And I thank everybody for coming out tonight and the Gazette for hosting this. We have an amazing pool of talent in this town. I want to take advantage of it. I want to hear what a lot of voices say about a lot of issues. I'm excited about the possibility of having a choice school in Oak Park, because I believe that we can attract families to our district, not just in the south, but in the central part of town as well. I think we can create something amazing if we all come together. I want us to come together to ensure that all schools grow. I think growth is the key to our success. I want to thank the people that have supported me through this campaign, the people that I've met have filled me with hope for this district, and I hope to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina?
Thank you for having me tonight. I have spent time in the community as a coach and a volunteer at church and school. I am vice president of the Chevilles Booster Club. I have attended our board community engagement trainings, Portrait of a Graduate, and World's Best Workforce Trainings. I have spoken with past and present admin. I have spoken with the Department of Ad regarding avid equity integration and at-risk kids. I've requested data surrounding programming, and I am in the middle of itemizing the 2015 bond. As a wife, mom, grandparent, volunteer, and small business owner, I will look forward to working with you to ensure strong, community-driven schools. As an elected school board member, I stand by my reputation of an honest, dedicated, independent, and creative thinker. It's time to get to work and make great things happen for Stillwater area public schools.
Thank you. Shelley?
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody here again for coming and for the Gazette for putting this on. I think it helps us get our message out, and for me, it's about wanting this district to be the best it can be. I think that's what we all want. But I, my time on the board has taught me even more how important that community voice is, and how our schools are, and how we can move forward together when we can all get around something that we're excited about. So it's my desire, as we move forward, to have a board who, we really work hard to come to consensus on issues when we can. It's not always going to happen. I wouldn't want it to always happen. But to work together and be able to consider everyone's voices and the teachers and the parents and the community members, and to, to create something that's really great. I think we have really great things going on. I think we can do more, and I think our kids can do better, and I think there, we have a lot of great opportunities, and I would just like to continue serving in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
Being the interim member of the school board because of the vacancy, I, I can tell from first experience of what we need to, never forget, is that the students come first. As we get into these budget issues, we have to do other things in other areas, and still we know we're gonna have to make some changes and some differences that will affect the students, but we have to work hard to minimize those differences. And I think we can do that. We have to work together as a group and agree to cut the things that spread the, the pain across the, the, across the whole budget problem. But we need to do the, the non-teacher and non-student situations first, and then see if we can figure out how to deal with the rest of it.
Thank you. John Fila?
Please go to johnfila.com to see more of my thoughts on these and other issues, and links to my other materials. I mentioned that I taught in a recovery school, and that, that was also a deeply personal issue for me because of family experience. I didn't just teach English there and make sure the kids got their English credits that they needed. About three years ago, four years ago now- About three years ago, four years ago now, a mother came up to me when I was at a restaurant and, and thanked me for saving her daughter's life. And I, I know what the gravity of this work is. I know how important this is. I've lost students to suicide. I carry those students and those experiences with me and see them reflected in the students in our district and my own children every day. I will make every decision thinking about those children first.
Thank you. Matt.
We need to restore our district's preeminence. We do this by utilizing all the resources at our disposal with unwavering focus on our kids and their education. But we have no time to waste. Our kids are waiting, and we're playing a bit of catch-up when we should be leading. We must develop precision in education with content delivered in the most effective way for each student. We must execute a strategic plan incorporating the input of our stakeholders and the community that ensures progress and growth built on financial stability. Our children are depending on us to get it right for them because they only go through this once. My daughter is depending on us, and we are depending on them for our future. Also, be careful that you're discerning about the data you're given. That one point five million dollars that Liz mentioned is not to administrators, it's part of a two point one million dollar set aside for technology that comes under administration. Be critical, be discerning.
Thank you. Mark.
Recently, I was asked what I would want to accomplish on the board. In fact, I think they, they asked me what I want my legacy to be. I said, "Legacy? I haven't even been elected yet." But I thought about it for a while, and I, I thought, what I want to do is to work to make Stillwater area public schools the choice. The choice for parents who are confident that their children will reach their own highest potential regardless of their ability. The choice for students to pursue their passions through broad experiences in foreign language, music in the arts, an innovative science curriculum, and vocational training. The choice for our community members to support this district with the trust that their investment will provide an unparalleled educational experience for our children. Please go and vote November 6th or earlier, and let's make this happen.
Thanks, Mark. Stillwater Gazette managing editor Alicia Labens is over here, has been writing up your responses. They'll appear in this Friday's Gazette, October 26th. Valley Access Channels will have replays of these forums, please contact them for the dates and times. Thank you very much to the school district for the use of the facility and the staff who helped. And finally, a heartfelt thank you to the Stillwater Gazette. During the quarter of a century that I've moderated and co-organized these forums, no one has ever tried to control me. Not that they could, but the fact is, you haven't, and you've just shown great respect and appreciation, and that's awesome to me. On behalf of the Stillwater Gazette and my co-organizer, Beth Johnson of Oak Park Heights, thank you candidates for participating, I was impressed with all of you. And thank you, the attendees and viewers, for sharing your time and your interest. Thank you. (applause) (music)[1703.48]